I'd like to call Amin to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight, our invocation will be given by Reverend Brent Rector from the Woodhaven Baptist Church.
Hadn't been here for awhile. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Let's pray together. Most gracious and loving God, it's a time of thanks. The month of November always brings that to mind for us. We give thanks always. We're thankful for your love, grace, and peace that you bring to our lives. We're thankful for this community, for what it means to us, that we can share with one another. We're neighbors with one another. We know each other pretty well, and we are thankful for the leadership that this council and mayor has provided for us through these years. We're thankful for this group that cares. We give thanks to them for their discernment, their wisdom, in doing what's right for the citizens of this community, for making sure that laws are kept, that things are done in a right way. So, we give thanks to you, oh God, for allowing them and giving them the wisdom to do the things that help us to grow, to continue, to thrive, and to be successful. So, Lord, bless this gathering tonight for all the things that will take place. Hold your hand over this group and give them the wisdom and discernment they need for the decisions they're about to make. In your holy name, we pray, and we give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Item number five is a public comment period, and no one has signed up. So, we'll...
Adjustment of the agenda.
Oh, I forgot the adjustment. Okay. Let's try number four, adjustment rule of the November 3rd, 2015 meeting agenda. Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now, we will open and close the public comment period and go right to Agenda 6A, Spatial Recognition. You might guess. The Holly Springs School of Dance. Now, the Holly Springs School of Dance with Director Marilyn Chapel, who is here, who also is the first recipient... You don't remember this, do you? Yeah, you do. The first recipient of the Mayor's Crown Jewel Award, there's been a few since, but you were first, will be recognized for their upcoming fifth appearance in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. Ms. Chapel said her school's first appearance in the iconic parade was in 2002. I was only 15 then. And she has a group who goes every three years. Now, Marilyn, you don't know this yet, but I'd like for you to come up and say a few words about this group, and then we've got a surprise, all right? We've got a lot of surprises. So, please come forward. You don't have to tell us your address or anything like that.
We know where you live.
Thank you so much for taking a moment out of your schedules to honor a really special group of kids. I am very, very fortunate to work and play with all of these kids, and it is going to be my honor to take them to New York City and have them perform in the parade. They've been working really hard since last January, doing lots of fundraising, and we live in the best town. There's just no question about it. Everyone collectively has... They've just been so supportive, and the kids have raised over $17,000 to get them all to New York. So, we are so grateful and so thankful to the residents of Holly Springs and, you know, really, all throughout the Triangle that have stepped up and to help these girls meet this goal and to have this dream come true. So, you will know who the Holly Springs girls are because they're the most talented and the most beautiful.
Ah, yeah.
It's true. It's true. So, thanks again. We will be joining Spirit of America, and they've got dancers from all over the country that will be there. We have the largest group out of any studio from anywhere in the United States. So, they are well represented, and they are going to make all of us very, very proud by being so wonderful. So, again, thank you for taking a moment for recognizing their hard work. And dancers, please stand up so that everyone can see all of you.
Can I correct her?
I'm out.
Correction. Would all the ladies come forward and stand up here because we have something for you?
Oh, nice.
All right. Surprise, surprise. Want to help?
Yeah.
I'll ask Councilman Dixon to help me. I think he has a look in his... Well, never mind.
You guys can do your dancer's pose.
Dance.
There you go. Face out. That way?
Yep.
You want to face out to the audience?
To get pictures, yep.
Face out to the audience.
Spread out so you can be seen.
Collins to the back.
We have something grand new.
Oh, Lord.
Daniel said the...
Oh, my God.
(laughing).
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 That was smart, too.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, ready?
That's a good-looking crew in the front row there.
I know.
It is.
No wonder they belong to.
Let me think. I remember you. I remember all of you. Sherry, Sherry somebody.
Your mother?
Lee with just one E. Remember Sherry?
Yes, my son.
Never mind. Agenda item 6B, request communication. This is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. And we do this every year, but to remind everybody, November 13th is World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day, and we have a proclamation to that effect, which I'm going to give Jeanette Wilson, who I'm going to ask to come up and say a few words like you did last year, I think. And I will let you tell them about your family to do that. And she'll accept the proclamation in an effort to raise awareness of this devastating disease. It's the fourth leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States. A lot of people don't know that. And unfortunately, of the 48,960 people who are diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, unfortunately, about 93% don't make it. It's huge. It's huge. So our job today will to make awareness of everybody here of that particular disease. And that's our job today. And Jeanette, if you'll come forward, and I'll come over and join you in two seconds and talk to us a little bit about what you know, because I remember your story.
On behalf of the Raleigh-Derma affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, I thank you for having us here today. I'm here to wage hope. I have a long story with pancreatic cancer, but I'll keep it short for you. I've lost not one, but three family members to pancreatic cancer, and I know that there's others in the room who have as well. My introduction to pancreatic cancer was back in 2007, when my husband's stepmother was diagnosed at 53 years old. I didn't know anything about pancreatic cancer, but she lost her battle in three short months. She was otherwise healthy. In 2009, my grandmother was diagnosed, and she battled for about six months. At that point, I started to look into it some more and realized just what this cancer does. And then 2011, my father was diagnosed. And at that point, I really was desperate for hope. And that's why I say that I'm here to wage hope. People don't know enough about this disease. The doctors are not funded enough to do the research that they need to find ways to identify this cancer early enough and develop new treatments. As the mayor mentioned, to date, pancreatic cancer is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the U.S., and it's the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 7%. The good news is that over the years, there have been some advances. There have been new drugs that have been developed that they're finding are a little bit more effective. They've determined that there are different types of pancreatic tumors and that they react differently to different medicines, so doctors can better plan a course of treatment. But what is not happening is early detection, so that we can stop it before it's too late. There are survivors, like they said, but that survival rate is very low. And without the survivors to give this disease a voice, it's up to us to do it. So I want to thank the town of Holly Springs for contributing to the fight against pancreatic cancer by recognizing November 13th, that was World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. I am going to be wearing purple on that day, and I hope that everyone will join me to increase the awareness, let everybody know that this disease is out there. It's more prevalent than we realize, because the survivors are not out there to give it a voice. And that's what we're here for. And again, I just thank you very much for your support of this.
A heartwarming story. Anyway, here's the proclamation. You said just about everything on there already. And it's proclaimed this third day of November 2015, World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day throughout the town of Holly Springs. I urge all citizens to be vigilant against this disease and supportive of those who seek to find a cure. I know Rex Hospital is working on this pretty hard, and I will guess that the rest of the hospitals are too. This is for you. Thank you for coming and thank you for sharing your story. We'll see you next year. All right? Thank you. Jeanette.
Tough disease. My dad and my grand, my step, my, um, all of them died of.
Talking on the air, Richard.
Hope everything's okay.
Well, we'll work through it.
All right. We have a little problem, we think, here. Agenda item 7A is request communications, crosswalk safety. Karen Brown, did Karen show up? I don't see her. Well, I can say a few things about crosswalk safety, because it's one of my pet peeves, I guess is the right word to say. About three, four weeks ago, some of you heard this story. I was at the farmer's market, and I like to think of myself as one of the leaders of the pack for crosswalk safety. And I was walking on a crosswalk, and a car stopped on one side, and I'm pretty happy. And I'm halfway across this crosswalk. The car on the other side, almost hit me. It happened to be a lady, but it could have been a man. It's not the point. I said something I shouldn't have said, but I don't think she heard me, so I'm kind of glad it, glad she didn't hear me. Crosswalk safety is something that we're all working on. Now Karen, if she were here, was going to speak about how important crosswalk safety. Speaking of Karen, Karen, you're on. I've already done half your speech, but that's okay. Come on up. Come on up. Come to podium.
Wow, I thought I was number seven. Y'all were.
We were worried about you.
Some days, number seven is at 10, other days, it's.
So let me introduce someone who's on our team, and I'm very proud of, because we have talked. Karen Brown's going to talk to us about crosswalk safety. Do you need a drink of water or anything?
No, we're good. Thank you. Sorry.
So at your convenience, whenever you're ready.
Fun time getting down Avent Ferry Road.
Blame the traffic. Everybody else does.
Totally, yes. Yes, and homework.
Yes, of course.
So, good evening. My name is Karen Brown, and our family moved to Holly Springs nine years ago. We chose Holly Springs because of the mayor's message on the town website. Thank you, Mr. Sears. We were searching for a safe town to raise our boys, and we hit the jackpot. We love it here. We chose Holly Glen because the high school was just built, Holly Grove Elementary was under construction, and Holly Grove Middle was on the radar. We thought perfect location for our kids to attend all 12 years, and they could walk or ride their bikes. Well, it looked great at the time, before the population exploded and traffic got crazy on Avent Ferry Road, which leads me to why I'm here tonight. I wanted to address the town council about increasing the safety of our crosswalks, especially around our three school campuses. But first, I'd like to share with you a story of how our trackout vacation ended very abruptly in September of 2012. We were in Baltimore, Maryland, touring the National Aquarium, and we were walking back to our car to head out to the beach for the rest of our vacation. It was 1:45 in the afternoon, and it was beautiful out. Carolina blue skies up in Maryland. Then my son Jack and I were struck by a taxi cab in a crosswalk. We had the right of way. My husband and Jack's twin brother were already at the other side and watched and saw this happen. I'd been holding Jack's hand when we were hit, but when I came to, Jack had landed about five feet away from me. Jack and I were very lucky that day. The cab driver was making a left-hand turn, so we didn't take a direct hit. It was estimated by witnesses and the severity of our injuries that the driver was going less than 20 miles per hour.
Really?
Holly Glenners, less than 20 miles per hour.
We hear you.
The driver stopped the vehicle before running us completely over. My son's Jack's injuries included a concussion, stitches, loss of depth perception, a bleeder on the brain, and skull fractures. I suffered a torn MCL from the impact of the cab and neck and shoulder injuries from my landing. And they can tell the weather now. We both, as well as Jack's twin brother, dealt with nightmares for most of that following year. Jack had multiple visits with neurology, ophthalmology, and ENT. I got to spend five-plus months in physical therapy, and many thanks to Sarah and Melanie at Village Physical Therapy. Jack and I got used to getting lots of MRIs. But by God's loving grace and our amazing, loving church family at Holly Springs UMC, Jack and I are fine three years later. So when I make all those Facebook posts asking for crosswalk improvements, hopefully now y'all can understand why this is so important to me. So how do we make our crosswalk safer, especially when distracted driving is sadly the norm? Our cab driver didn't have passengers. He was on the phone. The easiest solution is to get crossing guards, but that would only help during school hours. And I see our sidewalks around town being used all times of the day by runners and people on bikes. It's wonderful. I thought the new flashing crosswalk beacon the town installed on Grigsby Avenue is a great solution, but it costs $11,000. And at a minimum, we should ideally get three more for our school campuses on Avent Ferry Road and Holly Springs Road. So that's another $33,000 we would need. If we have any grant writers out there that can help get some of that money.
Say that louder, please.
If we have any grant writers out there that could help get some of that money raised, that would be great. Or some of our PTAs, along with the local running and biking clubs that would benefit. Maybe we could all hold some fundraisers to get these flashing beacons at our school crossings. There's a great opportunity next Thursday, November 12, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Wake County Public School Crossroads location. And I think it might help our town. I plan to attend, and I really hope that some other folks would join me. They are hosting a seminar, Taking the First Step: Safe and Active Routes to School in Wake County. It's an opportunity to learn about strategies and solutions for successful walking and biking school programs. The first panel discussion is safety and infrastructure, navigating with Wake County Public School and your town, our town. The panel leaders include Lieutenant Steve Broington from our own Holly Springs Police Department. So how fortunate is that? I plan to attend. Please join me. Active students are healthier students and strong learners. Walking one mile to and from school each day is 2/3 of the recommended 60 minutes of physical activity a day. In North Carolina, only 4% of students walk or bike to school at least once a week, and 58% of our North Carolina elementary students are not getting the physical activity they need. So imagine having safer crosswalks for our students to use in Holly Springs. And who knows? Perhaps with more walkers, we wouldn't have as many car pullers crowding the roads and the parking lots.
Saw that today, again.
And perhaps the bus driver shortage wouldn't cause so many buses to run late, therefore causing more people to carpool their children.
Yep.
And get them home on time. It's a very vicious cycle, isn't it? But it all begins with making it safe for our kids to cross the road. I have lots of ideas on sidewalk improvements and greenways, but I'll save that for another visit if you'll have me back.
Yes, you're welcome.
And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Karen. Let's give Karen a hand, and then we'll stay up there. Karen, stay there for a second, will you? Questions or comments? Because I have one in a minute. Anybody here? Kendra Parish is our Director of Engineering. If she would like to say a few words about that particular crosswalk and what we've talked about time and time again, I would appreciate it, Kendra.
Yeah, just something, in fact, I just emailed the mayor and Joni for me to get your contact information. The RFRB, which is on Grigsby, we went and we've looked at putting those in the school zones, and we applied for the John Rex Foundation grant. We did not get a finalist in that, but we're continuing to try to do grants. So I think, I love your ideas, engaging all these different groups and seeing who can, you know, who hears about grants. We're at different, we have Bike-Ped Stakeholder Committee meetings with the county, but anytime anybody else can hear about it, we would love to keep applying for grants. We also will be putting a request in for the next budget cycle for these to be in place at both Holly Springs Road through the Holly Ridge Schools and Holly Springs Elementary, and then on Avent Ferry and Cass Halt. So that's going into our budget request for next year, so it could be a funded project. So I think that's just sort of where we're at. We do have a bike and ped plan. We do have some improvements for striping. That's another thing. Sanage and striping is sort of low-hanging fruit. It's not very expensive, but it can really be an impact. So we're just trying to get some of those things implemented, but definitely getting together and kind of joining forces. We're all for that.
Thank you, Kendra. What I suggest is, would you send us or me an email on the meeting you talked about over to high school, and I'll make sure everybody gets it?
Okay.
And then number two, why don't you talk to Kendra after the meeting or another time, and maybe four or five of us can get together and just kind of brainstorm some other alternative ideas? And then you won't have to come back again real soon, but you could if you want to. How's that sound?
That sounds great. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Karen. Agenda item 8A, consent agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to adopt a consent agenda.
Motion made and seconded. It's been a long day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes are above the noes. Never mind. Agenda item 9A, new business, emergency vehicle preemption contract. Kendra, you're back on. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, too.
No problem. So, okay, tonight, this is a fairly easy item. As you know, we are looking at doing the synchronized street improvement at Avent Ferry and the bypass. DOT came in and did the spot safety project that was there at the Goodwill, installed a new signal. And there's the existing signal at Piney Grove in Avent Ferry. So you have three signals pretty close together, and we have a fire station right there. So what this agenda item is for is to get the design to implement preemptive signaling. So what happens is, all three of these signals have a device put in them, and then a device is put into our fire trucks at that location at the fire station. So when they get a call, if they need to head eastbound on Avent Ferry Road, then they would be able to deploy that device, and it would turn all those lights green so that it will flush out the traffic that's in front of them so that they can proceed on. So this is the, the contract is for the design of it. It would be installed when we do our Main Street and Avent Ferry bypass intersection projects. And so it would be, you know, active at the end of completion for those projects. We've also looked at, Chief Smith and myself looked at other signals in town and also seeing about having this put around town at all the signals. We've priced out that design, and that, too, will be a budget request item that we will be coming to in the future. We just felt like going ahead and moving forward with the Avent Ferry one was one that was, while we were in the design process, it made sense to do this now. So I can answer any questions, and.
Questions or comments, Kendra?
I think this is a great idea.
Me, too. Everybody feel the same?
Absolute sense.
Don't forget, we still are recognized as the safest, or maybe the second safest town in North Carolina to live in. Pinehurst, I think, went around us, but like I've said before, the last time I saw a golf course shot or stolen is a long time ago. So I still like to think that we're the safest, and we want to stay that way. So what you're doing will help that. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Motion.
Motion to approve the contract with Kimley Horn and the amount of $21,000 for emergency vehicle preemption design of Avent Ferry Road traffic signals.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing Nancy. Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you. And just one update on the Main Street extension and the Avent Ferry bypass project. We are all really waiting for that to start, and we've talked with the Federal Highways Administration is where that paperwork is right now. And they've come back from, they kind of review their budget towards the end of September, October, and they've started back on the stack of reviews. And so we've been assured that within a couple of weeks, we will hear back from them, and then we'll be able to advertise it. So that's the last thing we're waiting for, and we're waiting not so patiently anymore.
Tell them about the EIS.
Why don't you talk?
Everybody's been asking on I-540, when are we going to have the EIS from the federal government? DOT has been done for a while, and it was supposed to be probably four months ago, then three months ago, then two months ago, then one month ago, and what's today, Tuesday? I think it was Monday, I got a call from DOT saying, guess what? We have the EIS from the federal government, signed, sealed, and delivered. There is no, and I think this is good news, there is no recommendation in that EIS. I have not seen it yet, but I'm going to see it on Thursday. We're going to go downtown and have a big, big meeting. And they all know one thing. The town of Holly Springs, the town of Fuquay, the town of Garner, and now all the mayors in Wake County have also signed a resolution saying, there's only one color. It's called orange.
Yeah.
Just orange. And we're going to stick with that. And if they don't stick with it, there's going to be trouble. So we'll just leave it at that. So anyway, thank you, Kendra. All right. Other business, item 10, a couple of things. Anti-bullying campaign is still going strong. We have new bracelets now. I've given it to the council, and we had about 500 kids sign up at Holly Fest. I know because we ran out of 500 bracelets. So that was cool, and we're making good progress on that. The last thing I want to mention is, today is obviously Election Day, and I spent most of the day over at the Holly Springs Elementary School. They were all voting, and I asked them one thing. It's almost too late. Yeah, it is too late now.
Too late.
I said, well, I told them this afternoon. I said, do me a favor. And I talked to, I think, everybody except maybe one class at Holly Springs Elementary. Go home, tell your parents that you voted today, ask them if they voted. And then one of my kids says, well, then what? I said, well, if they said no, what are you going to say? We'll ask them to go vote. I said, you got the program right. So I don't know how many of those kids followed through, but I have a feeling that a lot of parents found out their kids voted for Holly Springs Elementary today. And it's typical, I was at Middle Creek, 8:30 this morning. I was number 10. Number 10.
You were at the wrong school, then.
Westlake, excuse me. Westlake, yeah. Well, no wonder I was number 10.
You should have been number one.
That's the reason. I always say that wrong. Westlake, Westlake. But I was number 10 after two hours, which is crazy. I explained to the kids that the most important election, in my mind, happens to be local elections, because that's where it is. And then I said, how many of you have seen the President of the United States or the Vice President of the United States coming down here to visit us? Never have. I said, well, maybe that answers your question. So that's my story, and I'm sticking with it. But here's what I wanted to share with you. Here's what they voted on. Kindergarten, what favorite color or favorite flavor of ice cream? Guess what won? Chocolaté.
Chocolate latte?
Chocolaté. Chocolaté. I was attempting to be clever.
Gini tall venti.
Yeah. First grade, favorite sport? Any idea?
Soccer.
Soccer. Are you reading this? Second grade, favorite park? Wumble. Jones was only a couple of votes behind, but sooner or later, I think that's going to change to another one that we all know going that way. Third grade, what's the favorite pizza place? Little Caesar's? That kind of surprised me. Fourth grade, this did not surprise me. Are you ready, Jimmy? Are you ready, Sherry?
Yes, sir.
Favorite fast food restaurant?
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A. Fifth grade, favorite Holly Springs event at the school? Oh, Holy Night, which was pretty cool. That was from Melinda Odom. I'm done. Thank you. Others?
Yes, I do have something.
Go.
Sunset Lake at Sunset, at, I'm sorry, Sunset Lake at Optimus Farm, Sunset Fairways in Sunset Lake, and also Sunset Lake at Holly Springs Road. That traffic is getting unbelievable, and especially at Sunset Fairways and Holly Springs Road, extraordinarily dark. Tonight, I pulled out, and somebody coming out from a new section that was just opened up on a crossroad. I mean, we almost collided, because we just basically did not see each other. So, and the traffic on those two roads are getting unbelievable. So I think we need to look into that, because it took me at least 10 minutes to get out of my subdivision, because there's so much traffic coming from Fuquay. Not from this way, but from Fuquay.
Typical, yeah.
And then I went through the other way. And this was after, I mean, schooled out. It's pretty tough. So if we could look into that and see what's going on over there.
Sure.
And make it a little safer.
What else?
Nothing here. Just waiting for the polls to close.
We're waiting for the polls to close. Anybody down here? You got numbers?
Just absentee and early.
Just absentee. We'll hold it off. All right. Anything else in the council? Managers report.
Yes. We, since the last meeting, we've had two very public events, and I just want to thank the staff that we have here in Holly Springs for the ribbon cutting at North Main Athletic Complex. That was a, that was a joint effort, certainly the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as Public Information Department. I felt like done an outstanding job. That was very well attended. It was a great event. Holly Fest, I think we probably had more participants than ever before. And I think that, you know, we, Joni or whoever ordered up that weather, actually, that was Lori Puzak. She took credit for that.
Lori did that.
Yeah.
Or Adam, I don't know which.
And it was sandwiched right in between rain, so that worked out really well. But I think that SUG farm, that property's laid out so well for those types of festivals, those types of events, went really well. The Haunted Hay Ride, I did get to see you over there at your best. At the cemetery, I think that went very well as well. So thanks to all the departments involved, certainly public safety, the Public Information Office, once again, had a very strong presence during Holly Fest. I liked that monitor. If people would stand and look at that, you could see all the events coming up in the next few months. And it also told the story of Holly Springs. So just very good event, and thanks for everyone involved with that.
That was an awesome event.
Do we have a count?
Yes.
Of potentially of how many people were at Holly Fest or reasonable?
I will tell you what I heard. Do you want to, you want to, go ahead, Adam. That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yeah, it was a lot.
What was the?
Ninety-five hundred to a thousand?
We sure did, yes.
Ninety-five hundred to 10,000.
To 10,000.
10,000.
I believe that easily.
Busy morning.
You were right.
I was right on it.
You were?
What?
Wow.
It's about 400 and some, 450 on Friday nights, and then Saturday night, it started to rain later on, so, but it was.
I think what hurt a little bit, if you want to say hurt, the fact that it was Halloween. That probably, the numbers would have been a little stronger, I think, on Saturday night, but a lot of parents were out with their kids for the haunted hayride. Yeah.
Friday night, we had full wagons going through on a very regular basis, so it was really, really good.
And I have to say, the haunted hayride, the costumes and the makeup were phenomenal.
That's why I don't go on it.
I mean, it really, they really, they really just put all, they put all out in there.
That's exactly why I don't go on it.
It was a great job. They did, these kids, whoever did all that, it was a great job.
Thank you, Jimmy, for the Grinch laugh.
I was starting to say, the kids in your ride played a role, I know, so, yeah.
I think.
Very good. That's all I have.
I think you can give Steve a lot of credit for what he did.